Hi Delaney, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, I can.
Um, and there's no echo though, right?
No, your video just seems to be delayed a little bit. It's a little bit messy.
Okay, um, my internet is, I don't know, not working really well. I'm tethering from the phone. So what I'm doing is that I'm joining from phone and laptop both, just in case anything drops. That's why you see me twice.
Okay.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular meeting of the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin for Monday, June the 12th. At seven P M. In the council chambers, we welcome those who are joining us as well online. Thank you to those in the chamber who have made the effort to come out tonight. If we could now rise for the National Anthem, please. Thank you. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty. That was signed by the Yandad and Anishapi nations, including ancestors of Chipwas, of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hottasani, Adirondack, Mississauga nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. May I ask the council if there are any disclosure of peculiar interest in the general nature of, please? Seeing none. Adoption of the minutes of previous meetings. Any council, any questions, comments, discussion? Can I have a mover and a seconder? Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson. That the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated May twenty third, two thousand and twenty three. And special meeting of council dated May twenty third, May thirtieth, and June first, two thousand and twenty three be adopted.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? We're very fortunate to have two delegations with us this evening. Uh, the first delegation is the Port Stanley Bicentennial Project. We have with us Ms. Nancy Moore and Brent Barr. Of the Port Stanley Villages Association, who are going to speak to the proposed project. Could I ask them to come forward to the microphone, please?
My name is Brent Barr. I want to thank you very much for allowing us to have the Port Stanley Village Association here in your presence. I'm actually only here really to introduce Haley, who is one of the members of our impact committee, our environmental impact committee. They've been working on this project for a while, brought to, wanted to bring together this idea to you. In hopes that you will support it. The one thing that I want to make, and just before I bring Haley up. Is that there is no cost to the municipality to do this project. And the Port Stanley Village Association directors fully endorse what the committee is working on. Haley, can I bring you up?
Good evening. Mayor Sloan, Deputy Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to outline our proposal to you. We are here today to propose a community-based green space project, two hundred trees for two hundred years at no cost to council. Or Central Elgin taxpayers. The location of this project would be on a portion of the berm. Some know it as the East Break Wall or the East Headwaters. This project will commemorate Port Stanley's bicentennial anniversary in two thousand and twenty four. The two hundred trees for two hundred year project will be a legacy for our community, our municipality and our council. As a kid, I remember the berm as a wild place, tall grass, big trees, potholes and large puddles. We'd play big games of manhunt and tag and get lost in the wilds. Fast forward to today, I now realize we were actually playing amongst a large stand of invasive frag mighties, but nonetheless, we wanted to be there. Today, my kids and my friends love walking and riding their bikes on the trail. Admiring the tadpoles, the ducks, the monarchs, the milkweeds and the fall asters. And watching the eagles and the seagulls fly overhead. The berm is really a special spot. With support from the, from environmentally interested community members and the Environmental Impact Committee. The local Kettle Creek Schools Eco Class have created several events around environmental awareness. Such as building bird nesting boxes, which have been occupied by tree swallows since they were installed. The two hundred trees for two hundred year project will continue to bring members of our community together. With the common goal of a green space that will be cherished in our village by locals and visitors for generations to come. Since remediation not quite a decade ago, the berm has naturalized in its own way. Which includes a fairly large wetland-like area housing aquatic vegetation and multiple species of amphibians. Beneficial insects and native flora, which together create a perfect ecosystem for migrating species such as birds and butterflies. Remember the waterfront master plan? Our community, community had direct input and potential influence on what our harbor visions were and still are. From the process, the top five recommendations for the East Harbor, the berm, were, are. Naturalization, waterfront green, walkways, wetlands and waterfront promenade. By planting two hundred trees in the area on the map that you have on page three. We can achieve four out of five of the recommendations from the waterfront master plan. I'd like to briefly highlight some of the goals on Central Elgin's official plan in section three titled environment dated August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two. On pages fifty five and fifty six. These goals will be achieved with the two hundred tree project. And the goals are to maintain, restore and enhance the long-term ecological integrity and biodiversity of the natural heritage system. To protect, maintain and enhance natural heritage corridors and encourage the identification, restoration or improvement of those corridors. To improve the sustainability and long-term health of Central Elgin's ecosystems by protecting and conserving valuable aquatic. And terrestrial resources and their biological functions. And to protect, maintain and enhance natural heritage features to avoid increased flooding, erosion and sedimentation. And of course, to improve air quality. Revitalizing the berm with biodiversity and accessibility will improve the way our community uses this space. And will be a feature for tourists to enjoy. The wetland and native plant diversity will serve the purpose of filtration of sediments. And hazardous runoffs into the lake as well as providing a carbon sink. We, the Environmental Impact Committee, have reached out to numerous resources with offers to assist with overall information. Sharing costs, specific planning, design and implementation, and with funding initiatives. Some key features of this project are there will be no cost to the municipality. The project can be council's bicentennial legacy project. The project achieves Port Stanley residents' desire to transform the berm into a highly usable, environmentally proactive space. As stated in the harbor secondary plan and the waterfront master plan. This project is consistent with Central Elgin's official plan and the land use noted in the harbor secondary plan. And the waterfront master plan and without taxpayer costs. It achieves an initial part of the long-term implementation. Implementation will be overseen by a steering committee involving all the appropriate stakeholders. Planting will ensure suitable perimeter access for construction implementing aspects of the disaster mitigation report and the ZUZAC report. On behalf of the Environmental Impact Committee, the directors of the P S V A and as a member and a parent in our village community. We would like council of the municipality of Central Elgin in cooperation with Elgin County to pass a motion. To initiate the bicentennial project consisting of a Carolinian vegetation area. And naturalized walkways on about one-third of the designated public lands on the berm, the east headlands in Port Stanley. In closing, it has never been more important than now to recognize the significance of our last green space. And the role it plays on the north shores of Lake Erie. The beneficial impact green spaces have on our physical and mental well-being are well documented. And should be taken seriously in any community plan. A community cannot grow if it has nowhere to thrive. These, these environmentally significant areas are disappearing and the impact they have on the greater environment is disheartening. And can be seen in many different examples all across the country and beyond. We are lucky enough to live in a municipality that is located in an environmentally significant and sensitive area. The Carolinian forest. Luckily, we have some green space left and available for all to enjoy. Important attention and funding is being focused on revamping and creating projects around sequestration of carbon. And we have an opportunity right here to create our own. We, as Central Elgin residents, have a close relationship to the lake and the abundant biodiversity that surrounds it. Now is the time, let's do this together, two hundred trees for two hundred years. Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce two students from Kettle Creek's Eco Class. Jameson and Harrison, who have been integral collaborators in the two hundred trees for two hundred years project idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Haley.
Welcome, Jameson and Harrison.
Hello, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Jameson. I'm a lifelong Port Stanley resident as well as a member of the Kettle Creek Public School Eco Class.
Hello, my name is Harrison and I'm also a member of the Eco Class. The goal of our class is to learn the grade eight curriculum through an environmental lens to build stewardship within our community.
This year, our classes sown seeds, done beach cleanups and conducted field studies in the sand dunes.
We have collected native seeds. From hot cliff, planted dozens of trees and created and distributed informational flyers.
But tonight. We are here to talk about the berm. Some of our best class memories took place on the berm. We flew clights, played baseball and explored the wetlands and. In the past, other eco classes have installed bird boxes, made poetry and painted pictures on the berm.
To us, it is clear that the last piece of public green space on the north shore of Lake Erie is a special place. Not just a place for kids to play and learn. It is home to wetland species that pit stop for migratory birds and haven for bird watchers.
And it is the perfect place for planting two hundred trees for two hundred years. On behalf of our class, we offer support in making this project happen. After all, it is our future.
Thank you very much. Any more comments from the delegation? Our thanks, first of all, to Jameson Harrison, their teachers, their school. To Haley, to Brent, to Nancy for bringing forward this uh, very important project. Um, as we all know, Port Stanley will celebrate its two hundredth next year. I think this is a timely uh. Um, undertaking for us for many reasons, not the least of which is the fact that it's, it's good environmental policy and. Of course, our ears were ringing to the fact that there wasn't a cost for the council. So let me thank you for your engagement as well as your presentation tonight. We will review this. And I see on the agenda, we have for September, uh, summer, spring, summer, two thousand and twenty three. Is for councils to get back. We'll, we'll, we'll take your proposal to our staff and perhaps we can look at it. I don't know, Mr. Graves, our next meeting or one very shortly and get back to you with, with the motion that's requested therein. So thank you again for your time and we appreciate having you here. Our second delegation this evening is from M T Consultants. We have Brett Thorne, uh, James Gillette. Who will be here or are here, hopefully. Are they, are they in the present? Are you online? You're here, okay? If you'd like to come up to the podium, please. And they're going to present the Edward Street staircase design. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, we're here to present our design. For the proposed Edward Street staircase connecting Edward Street and Prospect Street in Port Stanley. Um, my name is Brett Thorne. I'm a geotechnical engineer with M T Consultants, James Gillette, who's a structural engineer with M T Consultants. We, we started this project by doing some background review. We did a boundary and topographic survey of the area. As you know, Port Stanley has a lot of boundary issues, so we wanted to make sure we were within the easement. Of, of, of Edward Street and Prospect Street. We then did a geotechnical investigation, so we understood the soil and groundwater conditions at the site. We were able to give bearing and, and good ground conditions for the foundations of the stairway. And then we also did a tree inventory of, of that easement to understand the species that were there. From that information, James and his team uh, took to his design and, and came up with this. Graphical representation of what the stairs may look like, uh, as well as some of the, the details that, that go into that. So our posed design is, is a wood-based design on helical steel helical piles. We chose helical piles for the foundations due to the grading of the slope. And the difficulty of an augered precast concrete pier. That may be a little bit more difficult and expensive to install on, on that grade. We then used wood as the most cost-effective building material. And in, and the longevity of it compared to some of the other materials that you could use. If you want to go to the next slide. Um, we have an overview of, of, of what the.
That's really just showing the site services that are in line.
And, but it also shows the, the staircase and the landings there too. So we have, we have three flights of stairs with two landings with, with benches on them. So the staircase is built to Ontario Building Code as well as to the A O D A standards. For, for a staircase. We all, we also show the, the easement there with the, the property boundaries as well as some of the, some of the utilities that are in the area. So we had to work around the hydro. Lines that were there to, to stay with, outside of the limit. That they have on those regulations as well as the underground pipe network that, that goes through that easement. Make sure that we were, we were working within that, that constraint. A profile view of what the stairs will look like with the underlying grade. The stairs are roughly two meters wide, James?
Uh, no, they're less than that. They're about fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, so one point five meters wide. And then the landings are slightly larger with the, with the bench areas. We created a few schematics for, for tendering purposes, if, if it gets to that, that, that stage of the game. Um, to be able to help people bid on the work and, and also create some graphics there for, for different design details that you may not get. Um, through the profiles and other designs. Is there anything else you wanted to add, James?
Uh, just the, the benches are optional, I guess.
Yeah, so the benches are there as optional. Um, they.
But rest areas are required at the intermediate landings. So that's why we provided benches, but they are optional and not, not necessarily required. But you do need a rest area at the intermediate to meet the building code requirements.
So the, the landings have to be there, the bench is not.
Correct. And then the layout of the stair was specifically designed. Uh, one, to meet the building code requirements in terms of rise and run of the stair, but also to minimize the. Amount of soil removal that's required. At the, uh, at the site. So there will be some soil, local soil removal to meet, to install some of the landings, but. That's the minimal.
So that pretty much. Completes our, our discussion that we were gonna have for you. So if there's any questions or comments, we, we'd be happy to hear them.
Thank you. Counselor Graham.
Is there a minimum size for the landings that's required?
Yes, the minimum size is, I think it's eleven hundred, the length.
And is that the minimum size?
No, but you would need, again, this meets the slope of the, the, the natural slope of the hill. If I went to eleven hundred, you'd have to remove a lot more soil. And if that's more costs costly than to just add a little bit of additional landing.
So because of the length of, of the hill and the slope, we had to elongate the, the staircase for it to kind of fit that profile.
Uh, Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. Gentlemen, um, helical piles, um. How invasive will that be to that area to be able to bring equipment in to drill these? How do you drill the, how you, how do you deal with the helical piles?
It's actually, it's probably the most minimalistic way you could get foundations into this slope. So they will be attached to the front end of a, an excavator boom arm. And, and that's where the, the torque or the, the, uh, the auger piece goes on. And then there's, there's no soil or, or soil cuttings. Or anything like that generated like you would if you had to drill a hole or a concrete pier. So it's all fairly self-contained. And then they're also a little bit smaller, so we're able to, to deal with the utility. Um, infrastructure, deep details that we, we kind of have to work around.
You, sorry, and I'll just pick up there. You picked, mentioned a pipe. Could you explain that to me that there's a pipe which is interfering?
Sure, so.
Oh, the, the water pipes, the one that's interfering. There's three pipes in total. There's a sewer line, there's a storm line, and there's a water pipe. Now, the sewer line and the storm line are down very deep. So we will not be interfering with those with the helical piles, but the water line is only three feet or so, four feet. I know, I think it's seventeen hundred.
Yeah.
Seventeen hundred millimeters down. And the helical piles will be a minimum of two meters, so there is potential for interference between the water line and the helical piles. In order to deal with that, they will need to locate the, they'll have to excavate the water line. At the bottom of the stair and at the top of the stair at the time of construction. And then they can draw a straight line in the field to figure out exactly where that water line sits. And then, once that is known. They can locate.
So they're at the top and the bottom, they're not, it's not going up and down, or it is?
It goes up. If you go to the elevation drawing, you can actually see it. Yeah, the section.
Thank you.
Right there, oh, go down a bit more. There, so that's the water line, the one that's kind of hitting the helical piles.
Okay, um, and one of the questions I had to ask was, um. Is with respect to the, if there's a grade portion, like if you look at the steps that are on the other side that are going down. They start up on a grade without stairs. So is it, is that, is that something that can be contemplated? So at the bottom, as opposed to having step, step, steps, that there would be a certain amount of grade instead of stairs at the bottom of the, of the staircase?
So you just want essentially a limit, I guess I'd push the bottom of that stair.
To the first riser.
Almost the first riser? Oh, okay.
Just a question.
I'm not sure I understand you.
So would you, would you want it to be a naturalization of, of soil, or would you want it to be like a wood ramp coming up for that area? Is there a thought there?
Whichever. It's just when you're coming up on the other, there's a certain amount of like, you know, just. Nature that comes up and you walk and there aren't actually like. Pressure-treated stairs that are there. And I just wondered if that was something that had been contemplated.
Well, you need a concrete slab at the bottom of the stairs for the stair to sit on.
So that's the best way so you don't get settlement or, or unevenness of that staircase and the handrails.
Well, otherwise you'd have to do more helical piles at the bottom and that'll, that'll cost a little bit more.
It is something that you could look into.
Could be done.
Like you said, you would start it almost back. You'd almost naturalize that first, that first run. You'll start it back there. I don't know, I don't know what A O D A might say if, if, if that is accessible for all, you know what I mean? To be able to get up that, that certain incline, that may be something we might have to look into.
Yeah, it would have to be a one to twenty.
One to twenty is the accessibility.
I don't necessarily know if that's an issue because this is the stair that they can't get up anyways.
Mr. Brooks. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um. With regards to regrading at the bottom of the stairs, um, the cost savings to do that is. Probably fairly minimal. And we're not going to, going to make up that much of a difference on the overall length of the stairs. And on top of that, we have a very small easement that we have to stay within. Uh, I, I believe it's four meters wide. We're not allowed to stray outside of that easement at all. And any earthworks that are required for the construction of the stairs have to generally blend back in. With the, um, existing ground at the both sides of that easement. And if you look just, uh, down. At the north elevation of those stairs, you can see that there are, there is some earthwork required at the bottom of the stairs. You can see that they're. The bottom of the stairs actually cuts into part of that slope. So we are actually doing some regrading to accommodate the. Things, the elevation of the stairs as designed right now.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any other questions or comments from council? Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, could you speak to the maintenance and the, um, life expectancy of the products that the stairs would be made out of?
Great, so. There's different factors that go into that. So if it's going to be maintained through the winter and you're salting it, that will obviously. Decrease the life, life of the wood structure considerably. Uh, also, an issue with this that we've discussed before is. How to stop vegetation from going in underneath. Obviously, if that. Is not maintained, you'll have, you'll get the wood wet. That'll stay wet and that'll ob, obviously diminish the. Life of the wood stair. If everything was in pristine condition, you don't salt it, you keep the water away from it. You probably get something around twenty years before you have to start replacing main structural members. You may have to replace boards, the deck boards, a little more frequently. But those are just two by six boards that you can replace one by one as it becomes an issue.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Then, uh, that was actually, my next question was about the snow in the wintertime. How we were going to look after that or if we were going to look after that. Thank you, Jeff.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that would be a report that will be coming to council here. Um, not only, uh, potentially with this set of stairs, and we have a, a few other sets of stairs that are similar to this in Port Stanley. And, uh, it would be a staff recommendation that, uh, these stairs be closed, uh, through the winter, um, as staff. These stairs be closed uh through the winter, um, as staff don't have the resources to um maintain these stairs. Um, you know, through the once, through the months of, say, November through till uh March, when when we do have snow and ice.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I was in Toronto a weekend ago, and there were some stairs that the municipality had put in, and there was a sign that said no winter maintenance. So I'm sure, just like in Elgin County, sometimes we have signs that say no winter maintenance for roads. Um, I'm sure there'd be something similar that we would have to do to advise people. Counselor Halpin, did you have a question? Sorry, I saw your hand earlier, but I wasn't sure.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. I had been going to ask about the AODA implications on the grading approach, and that was met beautifully.
Thank you very much. Folks, anyone else here have any questions for the group? Thank you for your work and your efforts. Oh, sorry, Counselor Graham, I apologize.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, so I'm just wondering about the, if you're bringing up the AODO, because it doesn't seem to. Be accessible for people, say, on scooters or people that may be disabled, so. Is there no alternative that would compensate for that?
Not without some great cost implications, I would think.
It's not going to be accessible for all, then?
Not at this age.
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Brooks, did you want to comment?
Just to add to to that, uh, there is a uh Ontario Regulation one ninety-one eleven. That's called Integrated Accessibility Standards, um, which does provide some verbiage. In requirements for stairs that are constructed. And uh the elements of that regulation are built into the stairs, but uh. As uh these gentlemen mentioned, in order to, you know, accommodate, you know. Everyone, it would be, the cost undertaking would be significant, and we don't have the um. The real estate there in order to accommodate that.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham, follow up? Any other questions from the committee, or from the council, rather? The Committee of Council. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. We appreciate it, and uh we look forward to next steps in our discussions. Moving forward, correspondence, one from the county of Elgin regarding a joint accessibility advisory committee. Any questions or comments from the council on this item? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a second, please. Counselor Bachman and Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That staff be directed to bring forward a clause in the terms and conditions for municipal snow clearing contracts. That prohibits cleared snow from being deposited in accessible parking spaces for council consideration.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number two, again, correspondence with respect to a resolution passed by the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. On closed captions when recording all public meetings. Questions or comments? Oh, move it. Counselor Halpin? Counselor Help, or Counselor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman. That staff be directed to turn on closed captions when live streaming all public meetings of council that would be posted online for public viewing.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number three, S E one zero two three, a special events application from Lit Up Vendor. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I could have a mover and a second, please. Counselor Connors? Deputy Mayor Noble?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That report S E ten twenty-three be received for information. And the council approved the special events permit for the Lit Up Vendor event to be held on June twenty-fourth from twelve o'clock P M. And six o'clock P M on July sixteenth, from ten o'clock A M to four o'clock P M on August twenty-seventh. And August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, between ten A M and four o'clock P M, subject to the following recommended conditions. The organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council. Liability insurance being provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of five million dollars. Naming the county of Elgin and municipality of Central Elgin as co-insured and health harmless. The final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services. Council approval of refreshment vehicles for the event asked for by law two seven one one, section two exemptions. Refreshment vehicles being inspected by the Director of Fire Services. And a finalized list of refreshment vehicles being submitted to the communication specialist.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And items under items received for information, we have one, two, three, seven items. Any questions or comments from council on the items received for information? I'd just like to make a quick note on Southwestern Public Health, number six, the news release regarding. Identification of West Nile virus. My neighbor um had a tick bite and it showed the target. Which is, uh, you know, it's exactly what people say it is, and uh. This is a person who's been taking medication and well for fourteen days, but. I think it was apparently a very warm or a winter where ticks did not. Uh, there's more ticks than usual, if I may, so uh an important reminder that uh tick season is upon us. Any other questions or comments on the correspondence from council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second, please. Counselor Halpin? Counselor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman. The correspondence items number one through seven be received for information and filed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next, we have reports. Our first report is C A O one four two three from our Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Graves. And it is with respect to the Environmental Committee and Celebrate Elgin Committee. Mr. Graves, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is uh for council's information. It's my understanding that the. House Terms of Council have had both these committees in place, and so I bring this forward to see. Uh, just, I guess, to clear the deck on it and to see if council is. Uh, wanting to move forward on it, an environmental committee and or celebrate. Elgin, Central Elgin Committee, or to join, there was some thoughts about joining together and that they could work cooperative together, so we look for council's direction on that.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Counselor Halpin?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. Uh, I had, uh, this was quite a timely report, and I appreciate it. I had. Sent in a motion asking that we begin discussion about the environmental committee and then discovered that Mr. Graves had prepared this, but um. What I wanted to bring forward was that uh some of the different provincial changes that have come out over the last year or so. Have resulted in there being fewer things that the conservation authorities can report on when it comes to. Uh, work being done within municipalities. So although there's been talk in the past about merging these two committees because neither is very large. I think right now there might be some value in keeping the two separate, just so that. We know that the people that are on the environmental committee are there. Wholly for the interest of environmental interests and not just for. Other civic interests, because it would be good to have a committee who's entirely devoted to. Weighing in on our needs and from an environmental perspective.
Thank you. This, last time this committee met for the environment was, must have been before the last election. Do we know when the last time it met was? Staff? Um, sir, Mr. Brooks?
I I believe uh it it goes back to September of twenty-two, wouldn't be, be around the last.
I've had very little response, other than one person did get in touch with me about the Environment Committee, which we spoke about. Um, I'm 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 of the opinion that we align our our services and. To me, environmental and celebrate elegant seem to be two things that work together, but happy to hear what council thinks. Counselor Graham, please.
I I agree. I think, you know, we only probably need one um in in. Capsulating both of them, and I'm not sure we need um. Just looking at what constitutes both of them, not sure we need all those members as well, but. I would say, you know, one. Council member, and then I'm not sure that, is there any val- any reason for the staff members, that number of staff members being on it, but community members, obviously, I could see.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Counselor Bachman?
I'm just looking at the makeup of the committees. I'm just wondering. How much interest the Kettle Creek and Catfish Conservation Authority would have. In joining a celebrate when they're not included in this, in the Celebrate Elgin Committee. Um, what their relevance to even attending would be if if they don't have that focus of an environment committee.
Thank you, Counselor uh Bachman. Mr. Graves, did you want to speak on that first?
I think the intent would be that uh we ask him to appoint an advisor, and then. When there are items relating to the environment side that they would attend that. That piece, like, they wouldn't be formal members of the committee, they'd be advisors to the committee. And they would speak to those technical things that related to environmental issues. I don't think they would have a problem with that, they could. However, the agenda was ultimately struck, they could, you know, leave at the conclusion of the environmental staff or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Uh, Deputy Mayor Noble?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that made sense, what Mr. Graves said. Um, I think if we had. One, one staff member, one council member that was present on that, that would probably be be pretty good. And then uh get input from the community as far as some more, some more uh attendance.
Deputy Mayor Noble, did you mean one staff member or one council member? You said one staff member.
I I meant both, yeah. I I thought I said both.
Counselor Halpin?
Thank you, uh, through you, Mayor Sloan, to Mr. Graves. Uh, what would you say is a typical number of staff for our other boards, like, um. I think in the not-for-profit housing, we usually have three staff members involved, but I might be mistaken.
Mr. Graves, please.
But it's really, it's honestly, it's a moving target. It depends on the subject area, and also depends on the level of staff person that's sitting on the committee. Um, that can, you know, uh, reach out to other resources in the organization, so. Um, I think that's, that's really the will of council and through the harmony you'd want to have there. It's a bit of a moving target, to be honest with you. The other stock can attend, um, they don't have to be officially committee members as well, just to be resource people. If there's a topic on there that needs to be there, then another stock could certainly come.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Deputy Mayor Noble, does anyone else have any questions? Counselor Halpin, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan, more of a comment, but um. Uh, my one other consideration in terms of the separate interests of. Uh, celebrate and environmental would be that uh at the last Celebrate Central Elgin. There were a number of awards that were very definitely environmental in nature, but there were also awards for things like the Nameless that's working with vulnerable communities and homelessness and so forth. And you might find that people that are interested in the committee. For one reason or the other, might not take as much interest in the interests on the other side of the coin. So that's something where, considering that it looks like these are committees that only typically meet about four times a year. It might not be that onerous to just continue to have the two separately.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. My comment as mayor is that if you wish to put the two committees together. Um, and see how they go, seeing as they haven't had a meeting since September and apparently meet four times a year. I'll sit on the committee and see and report back to council if there's necessary to have two, but that's just my offer. If council doesn't want it, that's fine, but I'm happy to take the position. Counselor Graham?
I'd like to make the motion that we combine the two, and I nominate the mayor for uh that position on. On the combined council or the combined committee.
Seconder for that, please. Oh. Sorry, did you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, prior to the motion, I just wanted to comment.
Pardon me, sir.
Yeah, I'm I'm just of the opinion that uh more, more people create better ideas than the smaller group. I think it benefits by having more than one viewpoint uh on any committee. So I would, I would recommend having two council and and two staff or even more than that. Only because, I mean, brainstorming comes from the generation of ideas of a collective, not just of a of an individual. And looking at the. Current direction of our provincial government and and limiting certain aspects of of our agricultural area. Um, I think an environmental committee um with some. Vision and some insight could definitely help uh. Move Elgin County and Central Elgin in a more positive direction and at least be able to respond to. I'm gonna say attacks against our um. Environment and our agricultural uh resources.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Um, I just, I'll second Michelle's motion, um. But I think it would be great if we could reach out to the community to get some interaction into this. Into this committee so that we have some volunteers from the community on this. I don't know how many members we'd like to have from the community, but. Um, I I agree with with what Counselor Bachman said, that it'd be nice to have more people in it, and I I think it'd be nice if if we had the community engaged in that.
Thank you. Mr. Graves, did you have a comment on this?
I I guess what I'm, I'm just wanting to summarize where I think we're at on the motion is that the council uh would like to uh. Initiate a civic and environmental committee, that's point number one, I think. And then, at this point in time, uh, one member of council, that being the mayor, I'm just summarizing what I think we were at. And that uh one member of staff be designated. And that we seek a minimum of three members from the public, and I think probably the normal process is that would be advertised for people to submit. Um, their willingness, and then we would bring all of that back to council to endorse the entire committee once. It it'll take a few weeks to get that, get uh, get uh that interest, and that'll all come back in another report. But that's where I sort of see it sitting.
Thank you. I think we have a mover. Do we have a seconder? Todd, did you second it? Okay, there's a seconder for it. Delaney, Ms. Leach?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That report C A O fourteen twenty-three regarding environmental committee and the Celebrate Central Elgin community be received for information. And that council approved the establishment of a combined civic and environmental committee. With Mayor Sloan to serve as the council representative, in addition to one staff member and three community members. And further, that council requests a representative from both the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority and the Catfish Creek Conservation Authority to assist with environmental initiatives.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next report, Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, I C S one three two three, recycling collection ineligible sources. Mr. Perrin or Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this report uh provides an overview of the Blue Box transition, which is. Scheduled to begin July first of twenty twenty-three. Whereby the producers will become one hundred percent responsible for the collection and the costs uh for recycling. From residential um properties only, which uh we would classify as eligible sources. The legislation does not require uh the producers to uh collect recyclables from. Industrial, commercial, and institutional sources, uh what we would call ineligible sources. So, that being said, Miller Waste will be the contractor working on behalf of Circular Materials Ontario. Uh, which is a producer-responsible organization, and uh they will be collecting. Uh, starting July first uh through till twenty twenty-six, for sure. So, that leaves the municipality um. In in a spot where we currently collect from ineligible sources. And council needs to pro- provide some direction on how it wishes to continue uh collection from ineligible sources, which. Staff have proposed three options that council could consider. Uh, the first option would be to continue the recycling uh from the ineligible sources and fund that from the general taxes. Uh, this can be done in one of two ways, one. Which would be in-house uh staff and equipment, which staff would recommend if we, if staff or if council does go this direction. Or it could be contracted to Miller. The cost to collect between Miller and in-house staff is virtually the same. But what it does provide staff is more flexibility moving forward. Miller will only collect. Um, from those ineligible sources that exist today. So if new businesses open up as we move through twenty-three to twenty-six, they won't collect them. Uh, on top of that, beyond twenty twenty-six, they will not collect um from any ineligible sources. So that provides flexibility where the municipality could continue to offer that service. So that's option one. Option two would be to continue to collect uh blue boxes and charge the individual a user fee for that service. This could be problematic to the municipality because based on uh participation rates, that fee would vary, so. Uh, I believe we're looking at around a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety ineligible sources. Well, if only forty of those signed up for collection. The fee obviously is gonna, going to be quite, quite a bit higher. If it was. Uh, you know, all the ineligible sources, which we counted up roughly a hundred and ninety, we estimate the fee would be a hundred and fifty-five dollars uh per year. And then the third option, which council could consider, would be to cease collection from ineligible sources. Uh, many municipalities already operate this way, um. Large municipality to the north of us does not pick up recyclables from the downtown area. But another neighboring municipality does. So that's an option council couldn't consider. You know, another option, you know. Council could. Elect to go with kind of a hybrid where staff continue to collect the recycling. For, you know, a certain amount of time, which would be able, in which staff would be able to gauge. You know, how that process is working and report back to council should council want to change directions. So happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. I had the same question. What are our, what are our neighboring municipalities doing? I think there's a certain degree of making sure that, you know, the average person probably doesn't realize that it might be ending the first of June or first of July. So I think there's, first of all, before any changes are made, at least in my, my opinion is there'd have to be some communications and. Bringing people up to board on, or up to date and, and on what the changes have been made. But I, I appreciate that. Staff, have any, Mr. Graves, do you have any questions or comments? I think, Mr. Brooks, I was asking Mr. Graves earlier about what other jurisdictions we're doing, but you've pretty much answered that. Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. Can you explain the, the statement in the report that says that other service, it's not possible at this time or practical to look at other service providers?
I believe that's in regards to the price that we got from Miller Waste, correct? The reason for that is Circular Materials Ontario has caught, given the regional contract to Miller Waste. Miller Waste takes control of the MRF. The recycling facility that the city of London previously operated. Circular Materials Ontario will not, are only allowing. Sources of ineligible waste until twenty twenty-six. Beyond that, no matter who we want to collect, they will not be able to go to the MRF. So, you know, with in-staff, with in-house collection, what we'd actually have to do is collect those recyclables. Take them to a dumpster at the White Station Operations Center, where then it would be delivered to. A recycling facility operated by potentially waste management who we have a current contract with.
Oh, Counselor Graham.
So based on that, whether we're doing it or whether we could look at another, we could look at another service provider for that.
Specifically for the dumpsters.
Together.
Yeah, we already have a contract. If, if you recall, maybe two months ago, we brought a contract. For the dumpster services and Miller Waste was a little bitter on that one. So what we would do is just take their existing price and add to. Add to, add another dumpster to White Station.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. I think we have a new comment here. I'm going to go to Counselor Hoppin and then back to Counselor Graham. Counselor Hoppin, please.
Thank you. Through Mayor Sloan to Mr. Brooks. So effectively, we already have a lowest bid within the last two months then.
That's correct.
Counselor Graham.
So just so I'm understanding it, so we would. I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to understand why we couldn't look at other service providers other than in-house and other than Miller Waste. If another service provider would take it to the dumpster and then the dumpster would be taken to the waste management.
Brooks.
Potentially, we could. We have staff right in the immediate area. It would likely be cheaper for staff to do it. Miller is going to be cheaper because they're on route anyway. So to bring in another service provider with another truck from outside the area to come in and collect. You know, a hundred and eighty-six properties over the week. Real, realistically, they're going to be more expensive.
Counselor Graham.
So are there other service, service providers that. Provide a service that encapsulates both garbage and recycling? So if we put the garbage out and recycling out together for an RFP?
Mr., Mr. Brooks, please.
Potentially, you could look at contracting the garbage and recycling together in a single contract. What you would likely find if you did that would be that Miller Waste is already obligated. To collect from the ineligible sources, or sorry, the eligible sources. So that might provide some cost savings that way because they're already in the area. Obviously, if they're coming in to do garbage as well, they would need to purchase more trucks, hire more staff, that sort of thing. But that, you know, potentially. Is an option for council, maybe to, you know, could consider at a later date.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham.
Sorry, and just more of a statement. I, I think that would be the direction that I would want to go is that we look at RFPing the garbage and the I, ICI. Recycling together.
Thank you. I think we have, sorry, one, sorry, pardon me, Counselor Watson, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Sloan. To you, Mr. Brooks. When you talked maybe about a hybrid situation, that would be kind of the option one A. And then further discussion going forward, that would be the hybrid that you kind of said.
Through Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so, you know, if council wanted to go with option one A, there's no, you know. You could choose to go for that for four months, six months, three years, ten years. You know, it provides that flexibility.
Thank you. Counselor Watson, follow up, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would support that idea because if it's essential, I don't want to ruffle too many feathers. I want everybody to keep their blue boxes getting emptied out properly. And the other parts were, if it's the same price as what Miller is going to contract to do it as we can do it. Why don't we keep doing it? Then we got some control going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Watson. First Counselor Hoppin, then Deputy Mayor Noble. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with that. I like the idea that we continue to collect and the idea that. I mean, we all want business growth. So the idea that if we were to go with Miller, we would potentially have new businesses being created, but not having that. Recycling continue for them. I don't want to see us with a two-tier business system where as new things come on board, they're not receiving the same services.
Thank you, Counselor Hoppin. Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brooks, we have to keep that recycling truck just to do that little bit of recycling at that point.
Mr. Brooks, please.
On July first, one of our three trucks that we lease will be going back. So we'll be able to utilize the two trucks that we have to perform the additional collection.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Graham, please.
So if we RFPed it out, then we wouldn't, we'd be able to divest ourselves of those other two trucks as well if we're not doing any of the recycling, correct?
You know, potentially, if that's, if that's what. Direction staff or council wanted to go, I would hesitate to throw out an RFP right away. Because we have staff that are affected by that. And, you know, if we put out an RFP and those prices are higher. Then, you know, we could run into some. Conflict there. There are other. Ways that council could potentially look into a service like that in the future. But to throw it an RFP right away, I don't think would be the best direction to go.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Perrin.
Maybe just to provide a little bit of history and context. So the municipality actually did RFP this service back in twenty nineteen. And at that time, the most expensive option was with the private sector. And realizing that all of council's residents for a number of years in this municipality. The one thing that spurred the municipality actually going out for an RFP competitive process. Was a lack of service by our existing service provider, to the point where garbage was going uncollected. For two, three weeks on end for, for residents, which was less than an ideal service. Being provided to our residents. So at that time, the decision was made to cease that contract. Actually, they cut us loose. Because we were continually imposing liquidated damages to the tune of over twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a month. Because they weren't performing as per their, their contract required. So. You know, to. It, it's not as of recent, but I can tell you that back in twenty nineteen, the private sector was substantially more money. With less service than what we're providing now. From a, from a service level perspective, I think it's probably safe to say we get very few complaints with respect to garbage collection.
Thank you, counsel, or thank you, Mr. Perrin. Were you up next, Counselor Hoppin or Counselor Bachman, please?
I'd just like to throw in a couple of cents here that. I believe we owe it to our residents to provide a reliable service, something they can depend on. Something that they can see a benefit to as that blue box program is now. So I would, I would support Mr. Or sorry, Counselor Watson's proposal moving forward.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bachman. Counselor Graham.
And just so I, through you, Mr. Mayor, just so I understand the RFP process. So when we put an RFP out. We give them a budget. If they're not within that budget, then based on that bylaw that we were talking about previously. That we have the option to deny any of those bids because they haven't hit the budget. Is that correct?
Mr. Brooks or Mr. Perrin?
I'd hesitate to give an answer without being given the opportunity to come back with a report and consider. You know, how, how best to procure something or to gather information. You might go. Through a request for information first before you went through a request for proposal. So. You know.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Graves has a comment.
Yeah, just a couple of things. And I, I think the, the themes are kind of coming together, but. The whole area of solid waste collection, it can be very complex. It's a complex business. And when you're RFPing it or whatever, when somebody's bidding on it, they take a look at the term of the contract and. What kind of equipment they've got that's going to be able to service it for the term. And it's really complex, but that, those are exercises that municipalities do. So you, no doubt, at some point time, like that's not a bad consideration. The, the challenge, I think, is that in this particular instance, the clock is running out. And I know staff are still getting information even as of last week in terms of this whole process. So the dust is going to settle over the next couple of months in terms of best practices in this whole area. And, and I, I think as, as the report suggests it, at least for now, for the next few months, option one A gives flexibility to council. You're not getting bound by anything and you can review it in the fall again or whatever as, as best practices emerge and you get. Everybody gets their head around what this means in this new regime of, of recyclables. That'd be my comment.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Graves. Counselor Hoppin.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Sloan. I would like to give one additional comment, which is that I've had very good experience with. Our ability to serve the community when we keep things in-house. Like, for example, there were a number of times this winter, driving down some of Ward Two roads like Dexter Line. That I would see a mailbox knocked off by the snowplow. And when we have these things in-house, you can call to the building and say. Heads up, we've knocked somebody's mailbox off and someone will go out and fix it so that we're not leaving them pissed off and not getting their newspaper. And when you start just deliberately giving these things out without considering our own staff. We take away our own ability to fix our own problems and to manage our own things within our community. So, I mean, I like. That we can keep all of our businesses equally served. I like that we know who to come back to when things don't get done. And I don't see any reason to take it elsewhere.
Counselor Bachman, follow up?
No follow-up. I'd just like to put forth the motion that we go with Counselor Watson, suggestions that we go with one A and move forward.
Are you seconding this motion? Thank you. Ms. Leach.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman. That report ICS thirteen twenty-three regarding recycling collection ineligible sources be received for information. And that staff be directed to proceed with continuation of collection from ineligible sources using in-house staff and equipment.
Well, if it's, you can, you could suggest we like to add, and if it's okay with the move in the second of the motion, then, then that can be added.
Please, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brooks, you mentioned maybe bringing a report back about some of that other stuff with the garbage. Just so we can know that we're competitive. If in the future we want to RFP, I was just wondering if I could add that to the motion that's on the floor. Just, just that staff bring back some information on that.
Counselor Watson.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. I don't know what's gonna, what it's gonna add to it, Todd. I, I don't want it added. I just want to go with this option one A because I don't want to ruffle feathers. And we're the first ones in any municipalities to do this. So let's go slow at this, right? Let's take our time and do this right.
Yeah, we've got six months, right?
Yeah. So that's why I want to just go slow with our own people and we'll test the waters when we go forward. Thanks.
Counselor Bachman.
I'm with, I'm with Counselor Watson.
Okay, thank you. We have it on the table. All those in favor? Posed, carried. Moving along, Director of Financial Services, twenty twenty-two annual financial report highlights. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Hoppin, Counselor Connors.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, can I? Please comment.
Sure, we've, we've happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, the only one thing that I would like to add to the report, like as you have seen. There are different methods of financial statements, PSAB and all that kind of stuff. I just want to bring to the council that in cash, if we look at the surplus. For twenty twenty-two, we had hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, three hundred ninety. Hundred twenty-three, three hundred ninety dollars in cash, which actually fifty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-eight came from operations. And sixty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-two came from earth as dividends and so the annual. You know, dividend from them. So that's the only, like, it's not really eight point one, as you have heard from our auditor. It's like consolidated and all that stuff. And only cash was under twenty-three thousand, three hundred ninety. So that's the only thing I would like to add to the, the thing, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody would have.
I'm having a little trouble hearing. So could you do me a favor? Could you just send council a note on that comment that you just made, please?
I'll do that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those. Okay, all those in favor? Posed, carried. Director of Fire Rescue Services and Fire Chief, monthly alarm activities report. Questions or comments from council? Over in a second or please. Counselor Bachman, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That report FS six twenty-three regarding monthly alarm activities report, May twenty twenty-three, be received for information and filed.
All those in favor? Posed, carried. AMDS two nine two three from the Director of Asset Management Development Services. Monthly bylaw reports. Any questions or comments on that item? Mover in a second or please. Counselor Hoppin. And Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Hoppin, seconded by Counselor Connors. That report AMDS twenty-nine twenty-three regarding May twenty twenty-three monthly bylaw report be received for information and filed.
All those in favor? Posed and carried, May twenty twenty-three monthly building report. Questions or comments on the information? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Counselor Bachman. Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That report AMDS thirty twenty-three regarding May monthly building by, building report be received for information and filed.
Thank you. All those in favor? Posed and carried. Next item, AMDS three three two three, the Craig Home Subdivision Phase Six Draft Plan Revisions. Mr. Perrin, did you wish to speak to this, sir?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just briefly. So Craig Home Subdivision Phase Six, it's a fifty-acre site in Belmont on the south side of Seventh Ave. It received draft plan approval of subdivision in, in November of twenty twenty-one. That, uh, sub, draft plan of subdivision included a six-point-seven acre block. Which was to be utilized for school purposes. And since that time. Actual discussions have broken down between the developer of Craig Home Subdivision, as well as Thames Valley District School Board. And Thames Valley District School Board. and Thames Valley District School Board subsequently went forward with an expropriation process to expropriate the six point seven acres of land. Uh, the approval authority for plans of subdivision is with the County of Elgin. The County of Elgin, um, contract planner has recommended that, uh, the school bot, block be removed from the draft plan of subdivision, um, in order to facilitate, uh, construction of the, the school and not have it being, uh, indep- or have it be independent from, uh, the timing for the Craig Home subdivision in the case that, uh, the subdivision itself doesn't go forward, uh, in a timely manner. Uh, under the Planning Act, uh, that can be done through a, what we call a draft, uh, red line, uh, version of the plan. The blocks don't change. It's just that the block for the school blocks being taken outside of the draft plan of subdivision and all the approvals, uh, for the actual development of the site would be undertaken through site plan approval. Um, the services for the school, the inevitable services will go through the subdivision. However, through, uh, discussion with, uh, this, the Thames Valley District School Board and their consultant, they have alternative ways to service the school on an interim basis, uh, with uh, the final servicing being done through the subdivision when services are available. So, uh, staff, uh, do not have concerns with the red line as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Just as a comment here, these type of amendment, you, you'd consider these changes are minor in nature, correct?
Yeah, correct. Minor in nature.
Thank you, sir. Um, any other questions or comments? Councilor Watson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question to Lloyd. Lloyd, this is just learning for me. Uh, you talk about a red line process in nature. So is that essentially like when you have a draft plan and then you take your red marker and then you, you change things? Is that all it really means is just like amendments on the fly?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and typically those red line, uh, amendments have to be minor in nature. It's, it's like renaming a block, uh, 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 maybe a minor change to a, a property, uh, length or boundary. But, uh, having this draft plan gone through a public process, we're not increasing lots, we're not decreasing lots. Um, it's a minor change.
Okay. Thank.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if I could get a mover in a second or, Councilor Bachman, Councilor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Councilor Bachman, seconded by Councilor Watson, that report AMDS thirty-three twenty-three regarding Craig Home subdivision phase six draft plan revisions be received for information and that council supports the proposed red line version of the draft plan of subdivision for Craig Home subdivision phase six dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three.
All those in favor? Posed and carried? AMDS three five two three. Municipal led zoning bylaw amendment to the Talbot Line Employment Lands. Questions or comments from council or staff? Mr. Perrin, please.
If, if I may, uh, Mr. Mayor, so Mr. Austin is in attendance. We're just trying to get him into the, the actual meeting. He's in the waiting room right now. Uh, just for council's information, a public meeting was held, uh, for this, uh, rezoning, uh, statutory public meeting on May twenty-third. Uh, we did hear comments back from the public, uh, predominantly that we can address through the, the zoning bylaws with respect to, uh, the setback uh, west of Yarmouth Center Road, uh, which is the interface between the category one and category two type of industrial uses. Uh, originally we had it at seventy meters. There was a concern raised, uh, at the public meeting. Subsequent to that, staff have revised the, the bylaw that, the draft bylaw that was being considered, uh, to push that boundary, uh, back, uh, west of Yarmouth Center Road, a distance, uh, you know, not seventy meters, but pushing it back to two hundred and thirty meters. And that coincides with the boundary that was, uh, identified in the, in the bylaw, uh, for that, uh, section that, uh, is on the north side of Talbot Line. So both, uh, are being pushed back two hundred and thirty meters, uh, from the, um, uh, from the, uh, the, the road itself, Highway three, as well as, uh, Yarmouth Center. And Mr. Austin's in attendance. I'm not sure if you'd like to add anything to, uh, to my comments or his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Mr. Austin, do you wish to contribute?
Uh, yes, just, just a couple of quick comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you and, uh, appreciate Mr. Perrin's introduction and, and his assistance as we've been working through this. Uh, in our report, we tried to provide a summary of the comments from the public meeting and responses. And we did consider, uh, all of the comments received and as Mr. Perrin had mentioned, made a change relative to uh, the, the, um, class differentiation between the types of industrial uses associated with Yarmouth Center Road. We didn't see, um, the need to make any additional changes to the bylaw from what was presented at the public meeting. Uh, I do want to point out just a couple of quick things from, uh, the comments. Uh, one, the D six guidelines, I would just like to suggest that, uh, the final setbacks do exceed the minimum requirements uh, of seventy meters. I think more in the range of a hundred meters and somewhat, uh, more in some instances. So we, we built from the recommendation of the D six guidelines, uh, and didn't just, uh, implement the minimums. Uh, that was, uh, one of the comments. And I, I would just point out as well that where there were comments associated with, uh, where, where do roads go and accesses and how does servicing occur? Uh, that we wanted to reemphasize again that, uh, this process is the start of looking at implementing the official plan land uses. But details associated with, uh, servicing or infrastructure or access points uh, would be subject to further study that would also be, um, open for public input and agency review. And happy to answer any questions. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Councilor Connors? Sure. Council, sorry, Councilor Halpin, please.
Thank you. Uh, if we are going to move forward with this, then I would like to make a comment, and that is that, uh, I'd like on one hand to thank our consultants and our staff for the sensitivity they have shown in listening to the feedback from the community that lives in that area. But I'd like also to acknowledge that no matter how much we change those setbacks, it's never going to truly resolve the grief of the people that were living in farmland that are suddenly becoming industrial. So, I mean, this area, two sides of this perimeter are Saint Thomas and are industrial. And so this is probably the lowest possible impact to, to numbers of households within our community to meet our industrial needs. But if we are going to do this for the greater good of Central Elgin and impact these families, I hope that we can all go forward with that, knowing that we have impacted these families for everyone else's good. And that in all the other negotiations and site plans and industrial zoning and things that we may do going forward, we need to try to make sure that we are making this the least pain possible for these people and that we're making sure that they feel that they're being respected and treated fairly in it.
Thank you, Councilor Halpin. I have a mover. I need a second or please. Councilor Halpin will second. Thank you, Councilor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Councilor Connors, seconded by Councilor Halpin, that report AMDS thirty-five twenty-three regarding municipal led zoning bylaw amendment of the Talbot Line Employment Lands be received for information and that bylaw number two eight zero five be approved.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? Bylaw two eight zero three, execute to an executed agreement with data sharing and services agreement through MPAC. Bylaw two eight zero five, a men township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw one nine nine eight, Talbot Line Employment Lands. Any questions or comments from council on either of these? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or please. Councilor Watson? Councilor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Councilor Watson, seconded by Councilor Bachman, that bylaw two eight zero three and two eight zero five be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried? If I could get another mover in second or for third and final? Councilor Bachman and Councilor? Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Councilor Bachman, seconded by Councilor Connors, that bylaw two eight zero three and two eight zero five be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Posed? And that is carried? Moving along to motions and notice of motion. Number, our first item on the agenda is bylaw examination. Um, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, if I could get a mover in a second or? Councilor Halpin? Councilor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Councilor Halpin, seconded by Councilor Bachman. Whereas updates to the municipal act in twenty twenty made it possible for municipalities to quorum electronically. And whereas the municipal research and services center warns that use of phones by members of council during meetings can result in inappropriate or illegal discussion of subject matter. And whereas the current procedural bylaws for Central Elgin require that phones be set to do not disturb during meetings, but does not detail whether they are to be accessed. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to return report to council contemplating an update to the electronics component of the procedural bylaws to ensure that the bylaw is consistent with current best practices.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. All those in favor? Posed? And the motion's defeated. Item number two, school parking. Questions or comments? Councilor Halpin?
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I will comment here. Uh, this is something that was brought to me by the parent group at Ava Serse Cote French Immersion. Um, so originally, uh, when it was Sparta Public School, they had a very tight catchment area that was mostly Sparta and farms very close around it, which meant they did have bus students, but they had a pretty high ratio of people who were either walking or biking or things from within a close area. And so you'd get these issues of, for example, people parking across the street and their kid going across this eighty kilometer road to them and so forth. And it made sense that they requested, well, we, the council of the time requested that we go to no parking in that area. Uh, now they have people coming from whole other municipalities because it's a French immersion and it's got a huge wide catchment area. So it's almost all buses. There's a lot less foot traffic. There's very little concern about, um, having parents lined up and down the street to collect children and things. But all of a sudden, on the occasions that the school has family events or things like that, there really isn't enough parking to accommodate everyone. And of course, that was already a problem with the cemetery across the street. And so we had already looked for accommodation signage for that. Uh, so this request would be that we, uh, come back and say to the county that in light of the change of the type of school, we may no longer require the parking as it is.
Questions or comments from council? Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Uh, along that stretch of highway, that's not the only spot that we don't have parking. And, and I think because it's a busy highway, um, I, I don't know that we should be making changes without having some kind of input from, from somebody. Like if it was put in as a safety issue, um, if you go five minutes down the road, there's another stretch that there's no parking on either side. So, um, I, I don't think that we should change it. I think it was put in for a safety reason.
Thank you. Quick question to staff or whomever. Is this a county road? So shouldn't this be going to the county? Okay. And second of all, but you, Councilor Halpin, you said that this council is the one that said that they were making it no parking.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Yes. So, uh, a number of years back when it was Sparta School and not the French Immersion, it was this council that made the request to Elgin because it's typically the lower municipality that makes that change request to the higher municipality. Uh, so it's with that new situation at a different catchment that, uh, I was bringing forward the suggestion that we revise that. And, uh, if Deputy Mayor Noble is interested to discuss this, uh, something that I suggested here too is that there are a couple of ways we could resolve this. Because I do agree it is a busy road and I wouldn't want to put people at unnecessary risk. And one thing that I considered is that with the road being on the one side of the, or with the school being on one side of the road, if we requested to change the no parking only on that side of the road, that would still improve the parking situation for families, but it wouldn't mean people for family nights and things, walking children across the street to the school. And so that would probably mitigate at least some risk if the council is interested.
Thank you, Councilor Halpin. Uh, can I ask staff if the MTO should be involved in this decision or if they were in the last decision? Mr. Perrin?
Uh, no, they were not in the last decision and, uh, they wouldn't be involved in this. It would be up to the, the road authority, which is the County of Elgin.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Anyone else? Mr. Deputy Mayor Noble?
I just wonder if this is maybe something that the school board should be looking at, like, because the other places along there, they had to figure out where they were going to park and, and make arrangements to, to park safely. So I, I don't know that we want to change rules and create an unsafe environment, especially with children.
Councilor Halpin, and just before that, the, the issue you brought up yourself was that we're, we're taking away no parking signs from a school on a busy road. I don't know what risk factors were taken into consideration, but at some point this council decided to put this, put them in. And at some point, I mean, putting them in is a lot easier decision than taking them out, if you will. So I appreciate that you brought forward because I, I have some concerns about that. And if there was an accident and this council had asked for the, not to be parking there. So look forward to your comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Yeah, this isn't something I wouldn't want to go into flippantly either. And that for me was where the catchment was the real thing because, uh, when it was Sparta School, it only had to cater to the people closest to it, which is what typically happens with English public schools in this area. So there were a lot of kids in distance where they walked to the school, which meant there was a lot more risk of small children potentially being hit by cars and things, uh, with a whole group of municipalities all being serviced by one French immersion. It's almost all buses, which means children are walked with a teacher out to a bus, loaded onto a bus and shipped off of the property. And so there's really not that same transportation situation that was going on at the time that that was requested. And that's where I felt that we might be within reason to be reconsidering it because we have a very different process now and a much safer process as far as pedestrians are concerned. Um, so, well, and the other thing is that it was requested by the parent group because only a few times a year they do have these events. And so it's not in every single night we have a line of parents down the street. It's when we have our barbecue and our concert, like it's these things. And so you have families walking their children. It's not like kids that are in grade eight and walking themselves home. It's parents coming to watch their kid, holding hands with their kids, walking them back to the car. It's a very different level of safety again. So I do think it's worth discussion.
Appreciate that. Quick question. Do we speak to the actual school, to the principal or any administration? Just curious. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Sloan, I have not only to the parent board, but if you would be interested to have staff reach out to them and have us consider it, I'd be happy for us to table this and discuss with the school itself.
Well, there's the will of council. I appreciate that your, your intentions are good, but, or and we have some, some questions. So what's the will of council? Deputy Mayor Noble, excuse me.
Uh, I, I think it was put in play and it, it should stay in play that it's no parking, um, in an effort to keep everybody safe. Like I, I, I had children that went to that school and, and it was, it was inconvenient as a parent to not have the parking there. But I respected the fact that they did that for safety and it's also for safety in other spots on that same stretch of road. Um, and, and it's busy, like it's, that's, that's a busy section. You have fire trucks running up and down that road and, and a lot of other things. Um, I'm sure there's maybe something else that can possibly be done because but there's few of us in this room that had kids go to that school and you, we had to pick them up at different times. So, uh, we made do at that time and it was, it was a safety issue.
Questions or comments from other folks or other councillors? Pardon me. Councilor Bachman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Uh, Mayor Sloan. Um, I'd actually be interested in the viewpoint of the school uh, to see possibly an alternative. Um, obviously they're the ones that deal with it daily. So I go to the people that know it best and get their suggestions.
Thank you, Councilor Bachman. Councilor Hal, Hal, Halpin, thoughts on that, please?
Sure, through you, Mayor Sloan, then, um, I would be happy for us to move to table this until staff can communicate with the school about the school's interests in the matter.
Seconder? Councilor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Councilor Halpin, seconded by Councilor Bachman. Whereas Sparta Line in the vicinity of Ava Serse Cote French Immersion PS was made to be a no parking zone at a time when Sparta Public Schools catchment area was small with high pedestrian and personal vehicle traffic. And whereas Ava Serse Cote French Immersion Public School now has a different catchment area, which relies far more heavily on school buses than car and pedestrian transit. And whereas the parking restriction in that area limits the attendance of funerals at Sparta Friends Quaker Cemetery and special occasion events at Ava Serse Cote French Immersion Public School. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to return to a future meeting of council with a report that includes input from Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to return to a future meeting of council with a report that includes input from this school.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you, Ms. Leach. Thank you, Counselor. Halpin. Moving along, green light signs. Questions or comments? Pretty self-explanatory. Did you wish to speak to it, Counselor Halpin?
Sure, through you, Mayor Sloan. Uh, this does address a couple of roads, but in particular, uh. There was concern from members of the public about sunset because. We get a lot of traffic from outside of Central Elgin, St. Thomas in London folks. Who don't always know that we have volunteer firefighters, so they don't know what the green light means and they don't always know. How to respond when they see it coming. Um, this is something that Malahide has done. So certainly it's something that Elgin County has endorsed in other cases.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yeah, I did speak to some firefighters and they saw value in those signs. Um, I don't know about the placement. If they're. How we go about finding a placement for that, or, um. Maybe just knowing what the cost might be so that we can make sure it's in our budget to do that kind of thing as well.
Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I cannot speak to what the cost is and the budget, but, uh, I did consult with Chief Omerad about. The placements that the fire volunteers find most aggravating right now.
Perfect. I think we can probably find the funds for that. Thank you. Can I ask for a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Halpin? Counselor Bachman?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman. Whereas the Highway Traffic Act allows volunteer firefighters to display a flashing green light when responding to emergencies. And whereas time lost in traffic can change the outcome of a fire or rescue situation. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the municipality of Central Elgin support the placement of green light information signs at the locations described in Schedule A.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number four, key fobs. Questions or comments? Mover and a seconder? Oh, go ahead, Counselor Graham or Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mayor Sloan, uh, probably to Mr. Graves. Um. I wondered when I read this about how this might interact with AMP FIPPA, just in terms of. The possibility of council inadvertently discovering things that we don't necessarily have. Right access to, um, if people are in and things are not necessarily secured.
Thanks, Counselor Graham. Mr. Graves, please.
Thank you, uh, through you, to the mayor, to you, Counselor Halpin. I think my understanding of this is so that. Uh, council can have access in really into the building. I'm not sure this is about them going in the individual offices and looking on desks, et cetera. I think it's more just access into the doors. So they can get into the building. I would think that would, I'd hope that would be the case. They're not gonna go through filing cabinets or anything like that. It's just about getting in the building. So.
And on that note.
And, and so we shouldn't have a problem. If there's anything that needs to be secure, staff would keep stuff secure. Um, you know, they would know to keep stuff secure on their desk.
Supplementary, if I may.
Please.
Thank you, uh, through you. I didn't understand what. Spaces it was meant to allow us into because we do already have key fobs to the building. Was there a new space? And I'm not sure who brought this forward, but was there additional space to reach?
Um, I think what this, what this notice of motion is, is, uh. Moving forward is access into the offices, the central Elgin offices, not just into the building as I'm reading it. So I would. Say that it. That's what the motion is for, is to freely move within the central Elgin and have access to the central Elgin offices.
It is. Thank you. Counselor Halpin?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor Sloan, to the writer. Um, what would be the advantage?
Like, if I may take that, I can give you one of the advantages. Um, first of all, I was in the building today and I had to get to the basement to meet with, um. Mr. Graves and Mr. Perrin to discuss some issues about our upcoming negotiations with the province. So I couldn't get into the basement. So it would be helpful if the mayor had the opportunity to get in the front door and into the basement. Mr. Graves was kind enough to let me in. I'm not sure if they had a vote, but, uh, ultimately I made it, but, uh, I, I, I didn't want to keep Mr. Graves and Mr. Perrin waiting. Mr. Graves, please.
I think another point I just want to make is that, um. Although I'm not. That intimately, uh, acute of where all the locks are. I think it's just the main doors. Like, I don't think. Individual offices have fobs on them. So it's just really the main doors. So there's probably half a dozen doors upstairs and downstairs that it would, it would, uh, you know, be, be released.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Speak to this too. Um. Most of the other municipalities. The, the council and, and, and the mayor, um, deputy mayors, they can just walk in and have a conversation. With folks and, and it's, it's a much more welcoming environment. And right now, um. Like, like Mayor Sloan was saying, he, he just couldn't just walk in to go to the boardroom. So I think the whole idea is just, just to. Make it so that it's a little bit, little bit friendlier for us.
Well, just more easier access. I'm not questioning the friendliness of our. Great staff. It's just easier to get in the doors to get to meetings, but I didn't mean to change your mind. Counselor Graham?
I'll move this notice of motion.
Thank you. But. Okay. Counselor Halpin?
Through you, I, um. Uh, the friendliness was in part something I was worried about as well. And that's because having worked in library services, I found that. After a certain number of years, my branch actually put down red tape and said to patrons, we like you and we enjoy talking with you at the counter. But if we are in our office cubicle spaces getting work done, it's really very important to us that you not just walk through all the time because. We can't do everything that way and we need to have a little bit of. Boundary and space. Um. And I bring that forward because I do right now actually have two complaints currently being processed with the integrity commissioner about. Uh, what I was concerned may be willful. Mistreatments of staff members. And so I'd like to suggest. Perhaps tabling this until those reports are brought back and ruled on, just because. I'd like to ensure that we are maintaining the safety of our staff and those healthy boundaries.
Thank you, Counselor Graham.
No, I'm not willing to table it.
Thank you. If I could have a seconder for the motion, please. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mayor Sloan, uh. Uh, a tabling motion can be made to interject, uh, a different motion. Could I have an opportunity to see if anyone will second that?
For a tabling motion? I'm not sure the specific.
I believe what Counselor Halpin has asked, she's put a motion on the floor to table it. So just to manage, looking for a seconder to.
Right. So a tabling motion can sort of be a secondary motion that follows and adds to a regular one.
Give a seconder?
Well, that's what I'd like to.
Okay, please. Is there a seconder for the motion? Counselor Bachman? Let's speak, are we gonna?
Sorry, just a question for Mr. Graves. So which motion come, do we hear first then?
This, all the tabling motion would come first.
Ms. Leach, when you're ready, please. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the matter be tabled.
Thank you. Is that good? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Fails. And now Counselor Graham, do you have a seconder for your motion? Deputy Mayor Noble? Ms. Leach, please?
Sorry, Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that all of Central Elgin Council have key fobs that allow us to move freely within the central Elgin offices.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. We're now moving on to traffic calming on Carlo Road. Any questions or comments on this, folks? Counselor Graham?
Uh, just through you, Mr. Mayor. So these are just to kind of. Give a brief overview. These are areas that, um. Historically and currently, we have ongoing complaints for speeding, especially during the summertime. Um, so looking at putting the simple delineators, which I know we have a certain, I, I confirmed with Mr. Brooks, a certain number already. That covered Carlo Road previously when the bridge was being constructed. Uh, or not constructed, but construction was going on on the bridge. So also looking for delineators along East Road. Um. Approximately from Dexter Line down to just north of Curry Boulevard. Uh, as a county road. So requesting that we staff go to, uh, the county and ask for permission or approval of that with Central Elgin, um. Putting out the funding for that as well as the extension of Carlo Road, which is a municipal road. From, uh, south of Bridge Street, but just. South of the Legion. What do you call it? A bottle facility down to the boat park, boat ramp parking lot, because. Those are the areas where, uh, ongoing complaints are of the people with their racing cars, racing motorbikes. And, uh, and I believe there was one area that we potentially were looking at in Lynnhurst as well. If, uh. Uh, Counselor Connors would like to speak to that.
Counselor Connors, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Yes, uh, we had a, um, town hall on, um, last Thursday and we heard that, uh, there was speeding complaints. On McBane as well as on St. George. I, I further had a conversation with Mr. Brooks today. And apparently he got a number of hate calls or a number of bad calls. When we put delineators on McBane. So I'd like to do a little more exploration there before I do anything. I'd like to speak to some of the residents and, um. And then come back and, and talk to council again. But, um, I'm not sure if we can do anything on St. George because it is a county road.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Counselor Halpin?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor Sloan, to staff. Um. I believe I watched the council meeting of the last term of council where some of these areas were discussed. And there had been sort of a. Matter where it had been discussed at our level and brought up to the county. And the county had accepted in principle doing these traffic calming measures as long as we paid for them. And then the staff came back at that time. A- and I'm, I'm sure you'll remember it better than I did, but, um, I thought at that time that staff disrecommended. Doing out of our own pocket on county roads because we would set a precedent of. The county expecting us to pay for roads that are really their responsibility. Uh, was that what was recommended and is that still the opinion of staff?
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, in 2022, a report was, uh, brought to council from staff. That followed up a report from the county. So the county. Um, did receive requests for traffic calming on East Road, uh, in 2022. The county engineer at that time, uh. Completed a report to county council in which he recommended that traffic calming not be. Uh, installed at, on East Road. However. He laid out some options by which, uh, Central Elgin, if it wished, uh, could install traffic calming. Um, he provided a few different methods of traffic calming, one being delineator posts. Uh. However, that, uh. Also included blacking out lines and repainting the bike lane lines. Uh, it, the estimated cost from the county engineer to complete that work was $15,000. Um, so at that time it was staff's recommendation that, uh, being that the municipality already, um, does fund, uh. You know, upwards of a hundred to $200,000 for county road maintenance on its own already, that. The municipality does not continue to expend. Funds on county roads when really it's the county's obligation. Um, to determine whether or not traffic calming. Is warranted and further, um, pay for that traffic calming.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. When the delineators were put in across from the school in the arena, was that a county road?
Yes, it was.
And who paid for those, please?
The county.
Where did the suggestion come from?
It came through a series of, uh. Um, project meetings in the beginning. Um, it, honestly, the source, I'm not sure exactly where.
I thought it came from Central Elgin. Counselor Graham, please.
And I, we're not looking for, uh, you know, $15,000. My understanding from Mr. Brooks was that their delineators are $100 each. On the, the, um, more economical version of it, which is just a straight up delineator that you see throughout London now with all the construction there. And the ones that we used on, uh, or that the county used on Carlo Road as well. So, um. I think that if we can, if we can do that, it, it's going to help tremendously in trap for traffic calming measures in that areas. And I mean, we alw- we already have the ability to, um, if. Elgin County Council previously said that we could do it, then, then that covers your area as well, uh, Counselor Connors, that it can be done on county roads by the municipality.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Um. I just wanted to make it clear to council. Well, first of all, I'm not against traffic calming measures. First of all, I'm not, um. The municipality has a traffic calming policy that was adopted by council in 2018. Which provides, uh, a, a whole process for the implementation of traffic calming. Um, it, first of all, it, it provides, um. Resident participation. It includes, um, petitioning the neighborhood to see what the interest of having traffic calming in the neighborhood. Is we found out when we did a pilot project on McBane line. Um, there were probably as many people that were. Um, opposed to it as there were in favor of it. So that, uh, process kind of flushes all of that out and make sure that there is interest in the na- from the neighborhood in traffic calming. On top of that, it also provides justification for traffic calming. The, when the, um, proponent makes a request for traffic calming, staff will go out with the traffic counters, which measure speed. And we can determine what the 85th percentile of the speed is. And based on our traffic calming policy, which matches almost every other municipality. Uh, policy in Ontario, we can provide that justification where, yes, based on the speeds that are, uh, measured, traffic calming. Is warranted here and it's basically an objective tool, um, to, you know, warrant traffic calming.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. Um, the delineators that were on Carlo, did they? Work well during the, the bridge development?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
The centerline delineator posts. They had very little effect because what you really need to do is make drivers uncomfortable. So the way to do that is to have a centerline delineator post and then two on either side, which actually narrow the lane. So. When you're driving, you actually have to slow down so that. You can make your way through. If you just have one post in the middle, uh, you know, especially on. Carlo Road where it's fairly wide. It, it doesn't really pose much of an obstruction to, um. Driving out there. So I think, uh, in talking to the county engineer, when they did implement those traffic calming measures back in. Oh, I'm gonna say 2020 now, um, there was very little effect on the actual travel speed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Noble for a follow-up, please.
Through you, Mr. Eric, Mr. Brooks. Would, would it be a big deal for us to just pop those back in if it made a little bit of a difference because we already have them?
Thank you, Ken, Mr. Brooks, please.
Um, as I mentioned, uh, the delineator posts, um, a plain delineator post with Chevrons is approximately a hundred dollars. Then you have to install it. You can. Buy delineator posts with specific messaging on it, which, you know, could be somewhere between a hundred and $300 per post. So, you know, if you put out three of them, you'd probably be looking at about a thousand dollars to. Uh, purchase and install those delineator posts. Of course, that's. All being said. We need permission from the county to do that. So they may or may not, uh. Uh, allow those single delineator posts, or they may say you need to do the same sort of treatment that they've recommended on East Road. We don't know at this point because we haven't, uh. Broached the subject with them.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Halpin?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. Would the council then be interested in the same way that we did with parking in asking our staff? To find out what county would require here and coming back and reporting on this?
Counselor Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that at the same time that, uh, if staff is going to do that, that staff can request the approval of the implementation of the traffic calming measures from the county. And that we can move forward with the municipal road, the delineators on, on the, uh, extension of Carlo Road.
Thank you. So that's Carlo Road north of Bridge, Bridge Street to Warren Street? Or East Road from Curry? That's quite, uh, which, which ones, please, Counselor Graham? I'm having some.
So the municipal road is Carlo Road south of Bridge to the Boat Ramp Parking Lot. The county road is Carlo Road. From Bridge Street to Warren and the county road is East Road.
Understood. So you're suggesting Carlo Road south of the bridge?
Yep, that we could put delineators in there immediately so that we, uh, help with. The summer season where we've already started to see all the traffic racing, um. And go to the county and seek their permission to put the delineators into, um, the two county roads.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If we were to do that south of Carlo, could we just use the ones that we already have that were left over from the bridge renovation?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Perrin. We didn't sell them on a garage sale.
Uh. Uh, we may be able to use them. They're quite dirty and scratched up. We'll have to have a look at the reflectivity of those, uh, um. Posts as well. Um, we may or may not, um, be able to use them, although it's, it's not that big of an expense to buy them. They're. You know, a hundred to $200 apiece. It's the installation costs that, you know, double up what the cost actually is.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham?
I mean, I think, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible with this council, so maybe washing them up and. Putting them up would be a, a better idea to try.
Mr. Perrin has a comment, sir.
Yeah, just just to jump in here. So it's not just a matter of rinsing mud off of signs. Signs actually in the private cemetery will have to abide by certain standards. And that includes retro reflectivity. So we actually test the retro reflectivity of every sign like on an annual basis to ensure. Because in the event that there is an accident and that retro reflectivity is not in place, the municipality is liable. So, you know, I would suggest that let staff do our job and test to make sure that those signs do meet standards. And if they are, absolutely, I think that would be a prudent thing and staff would absolutely do that. If they don't meet standards, I wouldn't recommend that staff take and install a substandard sign that potentially the municipality could be liable for.
Understood, Mr. Perrin. Thank you for clarification. Any other comments or questions on this one? Counselor Graham?
No, just that I'm making the motion that that those three directions be given there.
Okay, Mr. Brooks, please.
I just wanted to clarify before the motion goes on the table here. With regard to East Road, what are we requesting from the county? They've laid out the details of what they would expect from traffic calming being $15,000, which the municipality does not have budget for. Are we requesting that we just put single delineator posts out on East Road?
Thank you. Is that right, Counselor Graham? Questions, comments? Deputy Mayor Noble?
Happy to second that.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
I would further request that from council that before we actually install the delineator posts, give us a week or two to measure speeds out on these roads so that we can determine what the effect of these single delineator posts on the centerline is and if it does actually calm traffic or not.
So just to clarify, you'd like to do a test before and then after so you can see if it worked?
Yeah, we'd like to know what the results are.
Excellent. If you can measure it, you can manage it. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. That's a great idea. Ms. Leach, when you have a second, I know you're busily writing this down and I'm not pushing you. I just whenever you let me know or let us know, we appreciate your your help on this one.
Thank you, sir. I will make my first attempt, but by all means, any amendments, just let me know. Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that staff be directed to inquire with the county of Elgin regarding the implementation of traffic calming measures in the form of single delineator posts on East Road from Curry Boulevard to Dexter Line with costs funded by the municipality of Central Elgin. And that staff be directed to first measure traffic speeds and implement traffic calming measures for delineators on the municipal extension of Carlo Road south of Bridge Street to the Boat Ramp Parking Lot.
Counselor Graham.
Sorry, Ms. Leach. So the first part to seek approval from the county. And then I don't believe that you included Carlo Road from Warren to Bridge.
Okay, I can make those amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Did you have a question, Counselor Graham?
No, just a little further. Sorry, Ms. Leach. So seek approval from the county to implement traffic calming measures, well delineators. Carlo Road north of basically what it says on the on the traffic calming on Carlo Notice of Motion. So those two roads were seeking approval from the county. And then Mr. Brooks is going to do traffic study, then implement the Chevron, or not the Chevrons, the delineators. And then do a traffic measure after that.
Thank you. Oh, are we okay to to hear it again? Or do you want me to just call the vote, which what councils will? Did you want to read? Hear it again, please, Ms. Leach. Thank you very much.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that staff be directed to seek approval from the county of Elgin regarding the implementation of traffic calming measures in the form of single delineator posts from Carlo Road north of Bridge Street to Warren Street, as well as East Road from Curry Boulevard to Dexter Line, with costs funded by the municipality of Central Elgin. And that staff be directed to first measure traffic speeds and implement traffic calming measures and delineators on the municipal extension of Carlo Road south of Bridge Street to the Boat Ramp Parking Lot.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. Thank you very much. Sorry, Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor. I have a notice of motion. So we had spoke about this in the past through Mr. Graves. It was mentioned to me that we need to put something forward to compensate the church for the use of their facility last Thursday. So I don't know exactly what to do, but I'd like to get them compensated in some way. They don't accept any checks or anything, but they do accept donations.
Thank you. Can I ask what the amount is, Counselor Connors?
The initial amount mentioned to me was $50.
Thank you. Questions or comments by council? Deputy Mayor Noble?
Happy to second it.
Second that we donate $50 to the church. Sounds pretty, pretty fair. Thank you, Ms. Leach.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin approve a donation of $50 to the Pre-Reformed Church in Lynnhurst for use of the church hall during the Ward Four Town Hall event dated June 8th, 2023.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. Thank you, Counselor Connors. Other business. Sorry, excuse me. First, Counselor Connor, or Counselor Graham. I'm going to need more Diet Coke.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Perrin had pointed out to me that when we were discussing the picnic tables in going on the berm in Port Stanley, that we had only approved, formally approved that we received the report for information. So I would like to make a notice of motion that we approve the up to 20 picnic tables on the berm in Hoff House Park so that the BIA can move forward with ordering those and getting those put in.
And the BIA are paying for these, is that correct?
Completely.
Thanks. Counselor Halpin.
Through you, Mayor Sloan. I know at the time there was discussion about the cost of garbage cans, waste collection and servicing and so forth. Could we get a staff estimate on the cost of that to us before we go forward with tables? Since the tables are free, but obviously the servicing would not be.
Counselor Graham.
With the amount of time that it takes to order them and construct them, I'd like us to be able to approve those and then so that we can move forward with them and get them here before July and this, well, the season has already started, but before the full season starts.
Thank you. Understood. Mr. Brooks.
It would be staff's recommendation with the picnic tables that they be grouped in groups of about four. That reduces the amount of garbage collection that the operations department both needs to buy a new can, which is a couple hundred dollars, as well as the ongoing maintenance for those. And if those tables could be kept to the perimeter around the parking lot, that would you know, be more efficient for future maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Graham, please.
Yeah, we were looking at grouping them already and but we will definitely respect putting them around the perimeter areas.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Bachman.
Just a quick question. Are these 12 month a year? Like, they're going to stay out 12 months a year or are they removed in the fall? I'm just curious what happens with the with the 20 tables when the season ends.
I think we'd probably take staff's recommendation on that.
Mr. Brooks.
Typically, the picnic tables are collected each year and reinstalled. We would likely at this point in time collect those, take them to White Station, then reinstall them in the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Other questions or comments? Counsel Watson.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that less is more. Let's just leave it as a park. We don't need to have any maintenance costs going forward. And I had another point. Yeah, most people have their own chairs and tables anyways. If they want to go out to a park, then I'm taking it themselves. Then they're secured that they got their own, you know, means and ways by bringing their own stuff. So I'm not really in support of this. It just seems like a lot more work. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Watson. I would say that when we, when, from my perspective in Port Stanley, I mean, we are there talking about places for people to go and enjoy the outdoors and that kind of stuff. If this helps toward it and it's free for the most part, then it seems like something that the council overall gets benefit from. But Deputy Mayor Noble first and then Counselor Noble, or Counselor Halpin, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm always a fan of spending less than instead of more. But I also understand the BIA is going to pay for the for the picnic tables. They're responsible for them. We're not doing the extra that we originally talked about with cement pads and and bolting them down. They're there. If if there's a challenge with them, then so so be it. But the other one benefit is if everybody's coming and just kind of doing their chairs and they're doing that thing. They also, if if we have a garbage can with a group of them, it actually might make some of that process a little bit easier for Mr. Brooks in his team.
Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. I do agree with Counselor Watson that there's really no such thing as a free lunch, right? Like either we're paying for cement pads and that's, this turns out to actually cost us money. Or if we're not paying for cement pads and some kid throws a couple of these down into the water or something, then, you know, like we're paying for vandalism or we're paying for the collection of waste from them. Or if we don't have trash cans, then we're paying for someone to go out and pick it up from around the grass. And one way or another, it becomes something for us. So, I mean, I really don't think without actual budget consideration that this is a reasonable thing for us to say costs us $0. Like, nothing costs $0 until we've actually talked about the packing them up, the dropping them back off, the servicing them and all of those things.
Counselor Graham, please.
I'd like to move this motion so that we can see if there's a seconder and vote on it.
Thank you. Counsel Noble, or Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
Yeah, I'll I'll second it and and I I'm under the understanding that if something happens to the picnic tables, it just happens. It's not up to staff or council to replace them if they go missing and they're going to chain them together. So I'm happy to second that.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Deputy, or through you, Mayor Sloan, to Deputy Mayor Noble. It's not that I necessarily assume that we will feel that we must replace them. But if something is smashed and damaged and is suddenly dangerous to the public, one way or another, we will end up paying to dispose of it, if nothing else, to clean it up, to render it safe. Like, we are not going to make ourselves liable for the well-being of the community by just leaving it out there with broken, sharp edges or whatever may happen.
benches in Port Stanley. You do know that, correct?
I do know that. What I'm saying is that right now we budget a certain amount for the maintenance of them. And that's humans and that's parts and that's a lot of things that go into that. So it's not free until you've actually calculated that you're not going to spend on those things.
Friends at the back, Mr. Perrin, please.
Maybe just clarification based on what Deputy Mayor Noble said to you, Mr. Mayor. So what I'm hearing is that the BIA will purchase the benches or the picnic tables. They're the BIA's property. So the responsibility for replacement of those benches is the BIA in the future. I raised that because this similar issue has come to light in the past where the BIA fundraised for a project and it's the the sale and anchor lights, for example, that were up. And there was issues with those as they aged. And then the municipality got questioned, you know, whose lights they were. And it was being requested by the people that donated money towards them to replace them. So all I'm suggesting is that based on what I thought I heard was that the responsibility for replacement in the future, because there's going to be 20 picnic tables. They're a gift now, but who's going to replace them in the future? Because they will be a service level that people will come to expect.
Counselor Graham, please.
The BIA is fully responsible for them. So whether it's replacement or repair.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
At the last meeting of council, staff requested that mulch be placed under these to reduce maintenance. If we don't have mulch under these picnic tables, they're going to be an ongoing major nuisance for you know, weed eating and that sort of thing and moving out of the way while we mow.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. How many summer students do we have?
Believe we have six.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay. Do they work in Hoffus Park?
Yes.
Okay, how many of them?
I don't have the details on what their daily assignments are every day.
Well, we might have to. Counsel, did any other questions? You've got a motion forward, do you not? Seconder? Ms. Leach?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the council of the corporation of municipality of Central Elgin approve the addition of up to 20 picnic tables on the berm and 10 picnic tables in Hoffus Park to be funded by the Port Stanley BIA. Per staff recommendations regarding placement and winter storage and without requirement for municipal maintenance or replacement.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. Thank you. Can I get a mover and a seconder for closed session, please? Counselor, oh, geez, sorry, other business, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. This is not a complicated one that we're going to have to take time on. But I've had a number of families in Sparta reach out to express their happiness about the baskets of flowers being hung on the light fixtures. And one family in particular did ask that I convey that to the rest of council and make sure that everyone feels duly appreciated. So to all of council, thank you for hanging baskets and to staff as well, because I know that really that's how that happens.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin. Mr. Brooks, sir.
I have one item and I apologize. I forgot to bring it up during the Edward Street Stairs presentation. The last council resolution suggested that staff carry out the design of the Edward Street stairs and then complete a public consultation. So staff would be asking council how they want to go about that public consultation. The method of consultation, whether that be an in-person meeting or a website posting, posting the plans and asking for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I'm happy to hear your suggestions. Perhaps you could let council know for the next meeting. Thank you. Any other business, folks? Closed session, mover and a seconder. Counselor Graham, Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Halpin. The council proceed into closed session at 9:04 PM in order to address the matter pertaining to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, the security of the property of the municipality or local board, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board.
All those in favor? Good to go. Thank you very much. If I could adjourn to adjourn closed session or return to open session, could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Deputy Mayor Noble? And Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors. The council adjourn from closed session and return to open session at 10:33 PM.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. CS2 Main Street Road Road Allowance. Can I get a mover and a seconder? Counselor Connors and Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Watson, that closed session item CS2 regarding the Main Street Road Allowance be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. CS3 Carlo Road. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Deputy Mayor Noble? Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that closed session item CS3 regarding Carlo Road be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. If I get a mover and a seconder for CS, CS4, please? Deputy Mayor Noble? Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, the closed session item CS4 regarding Port Stanley. Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson. The closed session item C S four regarding Port Stanley be received for information. And the staff proceed is directed by council.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. C S five Port Stanley, mover and a second or Deputy Mayor Noble and Counselor Connors. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors. That closed session item C S five regarding Port Stanley be received for information. And the staff proceed is directed by council.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. C I O clerk recruitment. Can I get a mover in a second or Counselor Connors and Counselor Watson?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Watson. The closed session item C S six regarding C I O clerk recruitment be received for information. And the staff proceed is directed by council.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. Bylaws to confirm the proceedings, bylaw two eight zero two, mover and a second or Halpin, Counselor Halpin, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That bylaw two eight zero two be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. Can I get a mover in a second or for the third and final? Counselor Watson. Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Connors. The bylaw two eight zero two be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. And if I can get a mover in a second or for adjournment. Counselor Bachman, thank you. Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That the regular meeting of council dated Monday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Be adjourned at ten thirty-six P M. And at the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock P M.
All those in favor? Posed. Carried. Thank you to staff. Thank you to council and thank you. Thank you for joining us.